Take your seats, please. Did everybody have lunch? Thanks to the PTO. Okay, so we're ready to begin again with Article 10. Everybody ready? Good. We have a new microphone person. Kalen. And she's in fifth grade here at Effingham School. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000 for the purchase of a police cruiser and police cruiser equipment, further to authorize the withdrawal of $40,000 from the police cruiser and police cruiser equipment capital reserve fund created for that purpose. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. I would recognize Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards has moved Article 10. Is there a second? Mr. Spencer, seconds. Mr. Edwards, you want to talk about this article?
This thing works. This is to replace the SUV, which is a 2012.
Anybody have any comments or questions about this article? Wow, lunch does you good. Ready for the question? Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000 for the purchase of a police cruiser and police cruiser equipment, further to authorize the withdrawal of $40,000 from the police cruiser and police cruiser equipment capital reserve fund created for that purpose. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of road reconstruction. This special article, this special article is a special warrant article. It's very special. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. I'll recognize Mr. Edwards. He moves the article. Second, Mr. Spencer. Mr. Edwards, you want to talk about this article?
This is for, mainly for replacing culverts. We have a covelet on Pine River that needs to be replaced. And we have one on the Molly Filbrook Road that needs to be placed. And the other one is, it's not really a covelet, but it's some ditching work that the acting Lake Alliance, they're going to cover the cost of the materials. We're just going to provide the equipment and labor. And it's for ditch work on the bottom and road from the, what was it? Oh, not the bottom, no. Remick Road down to the first covelet.
Any discussion of Article 11? Ready for the question? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of road reconstruction. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 passes. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to establish a fire department equipment expendable trust fund per RSA 31:19A for the purpose of purchasing or refurbishing fire department equipment and to raise and appropriate $9,000 to put in the fund. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. Mr. Spencer. Mr. Spencer moves. Second, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Spencer, do you want to discuss this article?
The chief is here. He can speak to this. Were there any other deeper questions on it? But one of the reasons for this is quite often the fire department through the chief's offices has received grants. And quite often you need matching funds for grants. That's part of what this will be used for. Those grants generally, in this case, I think the primary consideration is new radios. Being Selectmen, I've learned that radios is a really great business. But this is all for essential equipment. Thank you.
Anybody want to make any comments on this article? Questions? Ms. Siemens. Here comes Kalen with the microphone.
At the public budget hearing, we were told that this fund is strictly for if the fire department receives the grant that they've applied for, that this is the matching money they need. So I just want a clarification. If we don't get the grant, do we still appropriate this money? Just need a clarification.
The way I understand town government, if this passes, the money's been appropriated. But the selectmen are agents to expend. So if it had a God of Sol on it that it was going to be used for this first, for grant money, as I said, it's primarily, its primary purpose. Thank you.
Karen Payne, one of the trustees of the trust funds. Louder. One of the trustees of the trust funds. And speaking with the chief, one of the reasons also that this came up is that purchasing equipment for the fire department cannot come from the fire truck equipment fund. That equipment is for the truck. So it leaves a little bit of a gap for the fire department. A few years ago, we voted for the police department. We voted in a safety gear trust fund so that can be used when the police need safety gear. So this is not only for the grant. Yes, we hope we get the grant. But it does go beyond that to help equip the men safely of our fire department. And the Board of Selectmen are the agents to expend. So they would apply for the monies as they saw fit for that.
Okay, other? Yes, further questions?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Bailey. I'm just wondering, did we already apply for the grant? How much is a grant for? And when will we know if we got it or didn't?
Does the chief want to answer this?
If he's here, I just don't see him right now, but yeah.
Yeah, we have applied for a grant, sort of $186,000. It's to replace our radios, our air packs we wear because they're all, by standard, outdated.
All right, further questions, comments? Are you ready to vote?
Ready, ma'am.
Okay. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to establish a fire department equipment expendable trust fund per RSA 31:19A for the purpose of purchasing or refurbishing fire department equipment and to raise and appropriate $9,000 to put in the fund. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This is a special warrant article. It requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. All those in favor of Article 12 say aye. All those opposed, nay. Article 12 passes. Article 14. Yes, Mr. Jones.
I would like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration of Articles 8 through 12.
The motion has been made to restrict reconsideration on Articles 8 through 12. Is there a second? Mr. Potter, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Articles 8 through 12 are restricted for reconsideration. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $36,250 for payments to the following capital reserve accounts previously established. Invasive Aquatic Plant Capital Reserve Fund, $4,250. Fire Truck and Truck Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, $20,000. Police Department Cruiser and Cruiser Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, $10,000. Transfer Station Recycling Center Capital Reserve Fund, $2,000. And I assume that column on the right is the total amount that's in those funds already. That's Article 13. Is there a motion? Mr. Spencer moves. Mr. Edwards and Mr. Spence, Edward seconds. Is there a discussion on this article? Hearing none, you're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 13, say aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Article 13 passes. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,000 for payments to the following trust fund accounts previously established. Police Safety Gear Expendable Trust Fund, $2,000. Municipal Buildings Expendable Trust Fund, $10,000. Town Hall Restoration Trust Fund, $5,000. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Spencer, so moves. Second, Mr. Edwards. Any discussion on Article 14? Hearing none, you're ready to vote on Article 14. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 14 passes. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be added to the Fire Truck and Fire Truck Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance, which represents money received from the town of Parsonsfield for fire department mutual aid. No amount to be raised from taxation. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Mr. Edwards, I'll recognize you for a motion. You're making a motion, Article 15, second. Mr. Spencer, any discussion on Article 15? Ms. Payne.
Karen Payne. We have a lot of folks who have moved to town permanently and are here this year welcome. And just to let those new folks know, this is an article that we see every year. Parsonsfield donates $1,000 to our fire department so that we can help cover their calls as their neighbor.
Thank you, Karen. Any other discussion on Article 15? Ready for the question? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be added to the Fire Truck and Fire Truck Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This sum to come from unassigned fund balance, which represents money received from the town of Parsonsfield for fire department mutual aid. No amount to be raised from taxation. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor of Article 15, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We've done Article 16. We will move to Article 17. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,000 for Phase 1 of a project to purchase and install equipment to provide fire protection at the town hall library and to authorize the withdrawal of $6,000 from the Town Hall Repair and Restoration Fund, Trust Fund, created for that purpose. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee does not recommend this appropriation. The Selectmen do recommend this appropriation. I'll recognize Selectman Espy. Selectman Espy moves the question. Is there a second? Mr. Spencer, seconds. I'll recognize Mr. Espy.
Madam Moderator, I move that we withdraw this article indefinitely.
You're moving to indefinitely postpone this article. Is that right?
Correct.
Is there a second on that motion? Seconded? All those, any discussion on indefinitely postponing? Mr. Espy, you want to explain that?
The reason why is the Town Hall Restoration Fund really doesn't fit this. It's not a, it's not a refurbish. It's a new installation, actually. And we also have that money available in the Town Hall, I mean, the Town Building Capital Reserve Fund, which we plan on using for this purpose. We still plan on doing it. We just don't want to take the money out of the Town Hall Restoration Fund.
So basically, the fund mentioned in the article is not the right fund to take the money from. Any discussion on this article? Further discussion? Yes.
David Spencer? Can I understand what the work that was going to be done on this article that you're now trying to kill?
So what?
What's the $6,000 for?
What would happen?
This is Phase 1 of doing a fire and heat on the first floor of the Town Hall, the old Town Hall Library. It's totally going to do the first floor. It'll do two detectors on the second floor and two detectors on the third floor. And the original whole building was, the original estimate for the whole building was 14 floors. But we decided to do it in stages. And this is Stage 1. It puts in the new panel, totally equips the first floor, and kind of patches in the second floor and the third floor just to kind of cover us, so.
So is this because it falls under the $15,000? That there's no discussion as to whether this is actually a good purchase? Or are we doing phases to get it under the $15,000?
No, no, it was just, I mean, we could do the whole thing at once, but we just thought it was easier to go because Masons also meet on the second floor. And the Masons, I've got to approach the Masons to see if maybe they can kick in and do some, maybe they can pay for the second floor, so.
I guess I'm trying to decide or understand who decides to do this and why. And I guess I'd like the fire chief to weigh in on whether this is required or not.
Okay. First, we'll have Chief Burbank to answer the requirement question, so.
As required, no, because it's an existing building. You're not renovating a whole building. If you renovate, yes, you would have to bring it up. But because of the remote area and if there would be a fire, it'd be a long time before anybody even spotted. So this would give us an advance notice.
Eric Jones. My understanding is, in addition to the reason that Mr. Espy mentioned that the wrong fund was being approached, two years ago, it was explained at town meeting that the Municipal Buildings Expendable Trust Fund is for the purpose of doing larger-scale upgrade-type projects to municipal buildings. We already have an appropriate amount of money in that fund to do this project. So it's not that the project isn't going to be done. They still plan to do it, as I understand it. They're just going to take it from a fund that's more appropriate to that purpose. It also means that since there's already money in that fund, it reduces the amount of money to be raised by taxation by $6,000.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just, I think, Mr. Spencer, you didn't have your full question answered. And this proposal is from the Board of Selectmen. They're proposing to do this. Mr. Pykut.
Yeah, Bill Pykut. It says, fire protection. Where did I go and find it? There it is. Fire protection for the, for the building. This is a fire alarm system. This, this works after the thing's already caught on fire. I think any of these monies put into that building would probably be better off spent bringing the building up to more modern materials and building. It should be used to, the building needs really to be updated and remodeled. Putting an alarm system in an old building that's a fire hazard is not going to protect it from fire. It'll probably let us know when to come and watch, unless we address some of those other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Pykut. Mr. Ian Raw, where are they?
I just want to move the question. My understanding, if I'm understanding correctly, that we're voting to postpone table this whole article.
We're voting to indefinitely postpone it. We're not going to take it up.
That's correct.
If you're in favor of that, you would vote yes. If you're not in favor of that, you would vote no. Any other comments or questions? You ready for the vote to indefinitely postpone Article 17? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 is indefinitely postponed. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, oh, get it. To raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for a maintenance restoration project for the Elm Street Bridge. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. Mr. Edwards moves Article 18. Mr. Espy, second. Mr. Edwards, do you want to explain this article?
I'll try. The Elm Street Bridge, the water and sand got down through the expansion joint and has run along the bottom of the I-beams, the bottom flanges of the I-beam. The Elm Street Bridge is, it needs to be refurbished. The water got through the expansion joint and has run along the bottom of the I-beam and the bottom flanges of the I-beam are rusted. And this is just a maintenance thing. But if we don't maintain it, we'll be putting in a new bridge there. So this is just a maintenance item.
Any other discussion on Article 18? Mr. Morris? Pass the mic down.
Let's see if I can do it. I'm curious to know if this, if this amendment will fall under the new procurement procedure.
Mr. Spencer, you want to answer that one?
If I remember correctly, it passed fairly broadly. So I would say yes, because it is now an ordinance, which is a requirement to Selectmen live up to guidelines put forward.
Other, Mr. Argenti. That's Alexis, and she's in fifth grade at Effingham Elementary School.
Jory Argenti. I'd just like to ask if this can be amended. And I don't, you can answer this question. If we can amend it to say, any unexpended funds for this project be placed into the new, if it's passed, bridge, I think that's Article? 21? 21. In other words, any unexpended funds from?
Well, the basic rule for a town meeting is that subject matter that is not warned in the article is not valid.
Okay, all right, that's why.
So any money in this article that's unexpended, left over, would go back into the pot of unexpended tax money.
Okay.
And then next year, we could have an article to take it and put it somewhere. Okay? Yes?
Yeah, on that line, oh, Micah Helen. On that same line, since we have the maintenance fund being established, hopefully, in Article 21, so that we don't have money left over. Have a warrant article next year to put it back into the general fund and then take it back out and put it into the maintenance fund. We did that some years ago at Huntress Bridge. Would it make more sense then to table this one and look to put the $35,000 into the maintenance fund? It would give the Select Board more flexibility.
Mr. Spencer, can I answer that question?
My feeling on bridge maintenance is, let's do bridge maintenance. This is an opportunity to raise the money. I would rather get a yes vote on this than then not find out that if we tried to postpone it and open up the bridge maintenance fund, that failed. So the way I read it right now is, is a concern of what happens to any leftover money. It was put forward by the moderator. It'll go back into the unexpended balance fund. And then we can, the next year, turn it over. But I think trying to switch this money into that fund now just complicates the issue.
Yeah, Mike Polkowski, Budget Committee. This is a special warrant article. And the reason it is a special warrant article is because we wanted to make sure that that money went to that bridge. So I would support this article. It has written. And if there's more funds needed, it comes out of the other fund at a later date. But the special warrant article, the purpose for this, I think, is very important.
Further comment, Mr. Ian in the back?
I'd like to move the question, please.
Well, there seem to be a lot of questions here. Are you ready to move the question? Do you have further comments? We're ready to go? Okay. All right, so we're going to vote on Article 18 as is. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for a maintenance and restoration project for the Elm Street Bridge. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. All those in favor of Article 18, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 18 passes. Article 19. Yes. This is Elaine Chick, and she is moving that we restrict reconsideration on just 18?
No, up through, I think we left off at 13.
So restrict reconsideration on Articles 13 through 18?
Yes.
The second from Mr. Potter?
Correct.
Right, okay. So restrict reconsideration on Articles 13, 14, 15, 17, and 18. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So we're on Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for paved road resurfacing and repair. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Mr. Spencer moves. Mr. Edwards, Mr. Espy, second. Any discussion on Article 19? Mr. Spencer?
Just so everybody's aware, the primary purpose, pretty much the sole purpose for this money is to do crack sealing. We have been doing crack sealing on the newer roads. They were the most recently paved roads in town. I have done a slow drive over on Townhouse Road. There is some cracking. It's happening on the shoulders, so that needs to be touched up. Usually, this amount of money gives us, I think it is three pallets, Lawrence? Or three, two pallets of material. And essentially, we try to do our newest roads so that they stay in the best condition. And then if there's any left over after that, which at this point, there should be significant left over because we've been catching up on this process, is we start attacking. left over, because we've been catching up on this process, is we start attacking other roads, like Old Pound Road. That's had sufficient. My overall feeling is crack sealing is worth the money.
Any further discussion on Article 19? Yes, Mr. Pykut.
Yeah, I noticed last year on, in the Green Mountain Road towards Route 25, you did some crack sealing, but you only did one lane. So that one lane of the road's been cracked sealed, and the other lane has not been cracked sealed. So I really think that whole thing was a waste, because it only protected one side of the road. And even that didn't seem to make much difference as far as frost eaves and penetration.
I will say that when it comes to a decision on which roads are going to get done, that will be taking place at a normal Selectmen's meeting. And generally speaking, should be noticed in the agenda that that is a topic that will be discussed, and I'd be happy to take valuable information from anybody. Thank you.
Anybody else want to discuss Article 19? You ready for the question on Article 19? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for paved road resurfacing and repair. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. All in favor of Article 19, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 passes. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,680 to contract the services of Avatar Associates of New England Incorporated for the year 2017. This sum represents payment for the second year of a five-year, level-funded contract that provides for a full update of property values to market rate in 2020, as required by RSA 75:8A, as well as general assessing services throughout each of the five years and field data verification of information appearing on property tax cards. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Mr. Spencer?
So moves.
Mr. Spencer moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Edwards, second. Article 20, is there any discussion on Article 20? Go to Ms. Siemens and then Mr. Jones.
Throughout the operating budget that we'll get to in Article 22, there are several multi-year contracts, including the Winter Roads contract, the EMS contract. So I'm just wondering if anything makes the assessing service contract special, that we have to vote on this separately every year? And if not, can it be eliminated next year from the, from being a separate warrant article?
Yes, you may. It's just customarily been so? You're absolutely right. I will, I will put it in the assessing line item. No, we can't hear you, Claudia, so you're on the microphone.
I agree that it should be in the, it's been customarily seen here, but I do agree with what you said, that it will be a line item next year.
Any further discussion on Article 20?
Eric Jones, just because I'm assuming someone will ask, because this contract, as I understand it, is already in effect, the procurement ordinance we just passed will not affect this contract. But as the procurement ordinance we just passed indicated, when this contract comes up the next time, it would have to be put out to bid.
Who wants to answer that question? Mr. Spencer?
That is the way I read the ordinance as passed.
Okay. Yes, you have a question.
Steve Regal, what about the $6,125 that's in assessing right now?
Anybody want to answer that?
I don't have one right now.
Where are you referring to that?
Article 22.
Oh, well, that's the operating budget. Yes. When we get to the operating budget, we'll talk about what that money goes for.
All right.
Okay? All right. Article 20, any further? I promise you, and I'm on film. Film at 11, you can watch. Okay. We're going to move the question. Are we ready for that?
Yeah, ready.
Okay. I'm not going to read the whole thing again, because I would like you to break shorter warrant articles. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,680 to contract the services of Avatar Associates for the year 2017. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 20 passes. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to establish a bridge maintenance expendable trust fund for RSA 31:19A for the purpose of maintaining town-owned bridges and to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to put in the fund, further to name and Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation.
So moves.
Mr. Spencer moves. Mr. Edwards, second. Article 21, discussion on Article 21?
It's fairly obvious we're trying to set up an expendable fund for doing maintenance. We ran into bridge problems, because we've never done this in the past. It's considered, I think, by the Budget Committee and the Selectmen, a reasonable amount of money to put it in the first year, as we understand what it costs to maintain new bridges that we're building and stuff like that. In the future, we may even ask for a little more, a little less, on a given year. But essentially, it's just that we can do normal maintenance, as was expressed about the longevity of a cement bridge, as long as you don't let grass and stuff grow on it, it'll last longer. This is what that is for, is to make sure you do maintenance.
Any questions on Article 21?
Again, not to sound like a broken record, but for the last 30 years, we've been looking to put money into bridge maintenance. And if we had done this back in the 70s, we might not be in the same situation we are right now. So I just want to go on record, are strongly recommending this, and I did at the Budget Committee hearings as well. I strongly recommend putting any money into this account that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Bartowitz. Any other discussion on Article 21?
Yeah, just so everybody's aware, this is a maintenance fund. It is, it wouldn't be for replacing a bridge. But one of the advantages of having a maintenance fund and occasionally going out and doing maintenance is you can begin to see that, wow, we're going to have to start saving up $250,000 to fix this bridge, and you might be able to do it 12 years before you need the money.
Any further discussion on Article 21? You ready to vote on Article 21? To see if the town will vote to raise and, to see if the town will vote to establish a bridge maintenance expendable trust fund for RSA 31:19A for the purpose of maintaining town-owned bridges and to raise and appropriate $5,000 to put into the fund, further to name the Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend this appropriation. All those in favor of Article 21, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it. Article 21 passes. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,525,123 for the ensuing year for general operation. This requires a majority vote. This is your operating budget. The amounts and purposes listed here are general purposes. More detail for each of those purposes is on Page 8 through 13. So we can work our way through that. So do I have a motion on Article 22?
So moves.
Henry Spencer moves, and Mr. Espy second, Article 22. Is there a discussion on Article 22? Right here?
Yes, Betty Brown. Yes. Every year, when I get the annual report, I go over, as like what you were just talking about, to compare what they're asking for, for what they put out, and so forth. I did not see, maybe I'm mistaken, I did ask Claudia, I didn't see a police report this year of calls in and so forth, to see how many times they were on the road, for gas, why, to, you know, that was the only one. We do it for all of them, not just picking on one, but we do it for all, for an assessment of, should we vote for that amount? We don't think they do, or yes, we feel they need more. The report was not there.
Is there a police report?
I saw one for the fire department. I saw, it was like around about where they had the, oh, bitch, yeah. But that's, that's not a report, it's just a letter. It's not, the item is like the fire department. Do you see it on 50?
I'm not sure they didn't provide one. But we certainly could get one and have it available at the municipal office building.
Right. I'm just saying, this is what I do for all of them, to assess a yes or a no for appropriate funds.
We'll do that for next year. Are there questions about amounts appropriated? Do you want to work down through executive $102,408? Yes, question in the back.
Pat Riker, can you tell me why there's an increase in the executive budget?
Who wants to handle that? Mr. Spencer?
Actually, I would rather pass it over to Claudia.
Okay. We'll have Claudia.
We no longer have a designated person for assessing as an employee, so that expense, modified, decreased, has moved into the executive salaries.
Okay. Any further questions about executive?
Tim Murphy, I'm curious, is this, is this the question of the third person working in the office with you, and, and the raises appropriated to people this year at Town Hall?
Who wants to answer that question? Nobody.
But I will.
I barely hear it when you told me so.
There has been an increase for employees factored in, yes. And what was the first part of the question?
I asked Claudia if this was, a third person's being added to your office?
Yes.
And...
Not a full-time person, a part-time person.
Yep, once again.
Okay, thank you.
Lynda Edwards, I was wondering, this third person, what will she or he be doing?
I think that kind of needs to be brainstormed. I've had several suggestions made from the public that need to be considered. My original thought was minutes, not that we wouldn't be in the room, but typing of those minutes can take up some time.
Further questions?
If you're going to be in the room, then why wouldn't you be taking minutes?
It's quite time-consuming to just do, type the minutes. I, again, I'm open to suggestions. I'm just putting in for a part-time person, another part-time person to be available at the office. The window, the interruptions that come through the window and the phone calls, if we could eliminate that, it would be a little more advantageous for work time.
Okay. Mr. Potter, did you have, no? Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Murphy, I don't know, I'd like to make a motion to amend that and to not have a third person hired.
Well, at this stage, all you can do is add or subtract from the amounts. Decisions about how many people and all that is up to the Board of Selectmen. So if you want to subtract a certain amount, we can make that amendment. So you have to keep your amendments to amounts.
Well, that being the case, my reasoning behind that is, at this point, we've got enough things on our plate. If someone needs to step up the plate a little more to work a little harder in that office, then so be it. But we need, we don't need that added expense. There should be a freeze on hiring at this point, and we should be saving money, not expending it.
So can you, are you good with just saying that, or do you want to...
No, ma'am. I suggest we drop that line by a $10,000 amount.
All right. So your motion is to reduce the bottom line of the budget by $10,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That amendment is on the floor. Is there a second? There's a second from Ms. Riker. Is there a discussion on that amendment?
I just needed clarification on that. Does that take the $10,000 specifically away from the executive or from the main article?
It takes the $10,000 from the $1,525,123.
So that actually, the Selectmen have the authority to just move $10,000 from somewhere else to hire that person?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy?
I would like to change that, so that it's, take it from the executive.
Well, town meeting doesn't have that authority. All they have authority to do is to increase or decrease that $1,525,123.
Well, then I guess they'll have to get their priorities straight if we vote to decrease it by $10,000.
That's right. You've expressed where you want that to come from, and it'll be up to them to think about that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the bottom line by reducing it by $10,000. Further comment? Questions?
Cindy Espy, my question is, is this third position going to be put out? Are you going to apply for this job?
Me?
Or, no, not specifically, but will you, will it be an application-type job?
Mr. Spencer?
I'm making an assumption that it would definitely be posted as a position that's available, if allowed by you. I would like to make a comment on the reduction of $10,000. If everybody notices, both the Budget Committee and the Selectmen... I'm sorry, both the Budget Committee and the selection, uh, Selectmen approve the entire budget. I don't spend a huge amount of time in the office, because they have a lot of work to do. If I spend too much time in there, I'm no better than the interruptions that they get over the telephone, or the valuable services that they provide to the public. There is no way that I believe that a third person is an unnecessary aspect of the proper management of Effingham, New Hampshire. I do know the stresses that those office workers are put under. And to suggest that they maybe just need to work a little harder, I find kind of sad. These people can't work any harder than they do. They, it's just constant. They would not be asking for a third person if they thought it was just to make their life easier. The reason a third person is being requested in the office is the efficiency of the office will improve.
Okay. Mr. Bartowitz, and then we'll come up here and back over to Ms. Edwards.
Again, at Budget Committee meetings, the hearings we had, there was some serious discussion about this, and whether we should approve it or not. I know for a fact that Claudia has put in a lot of time in the office that she doesn't really put in for wages for. Whenever, as, when I was serving as chair, whenever I requested information from the town office, the Selectmen's office, it was always there and available. I also know for a fact that with the number 91A request, which are the Freedom of Information Act requests, we're putting an extreme burden on the office to provide the information, and sometimes it's, the deadline isn't going to be able to be met. I strongly recommend that we don't deduct the $10,000 from this line item. I wrestled hard, long and hard with it when we were discussing it at Budget Committee, and finally came to the decision that it is a necessary expenditure.
Susan Regal, I worked in a small office for 27 years as a full-time employee, and it was invaluable to have a part-time employee, or I would have been there 12 hours a day instead of eight hours a day. And I approve, I want to keep the article, that as it is.
Further, Ms. Edwards?
Lynda Edwards, I would just like to say, if this does pass, could we please advertise this and put it out for people, for everyone to apply? And hopefully, we'll have somebody from Effingham that will apply for the job.
I think that's what you already said the intention was.
Yes.
Okay. Further on this matter?
Dave Strauss, I'm on the Budget Committee also. This was presented to us. It's a decrease from the assessing, so we're not actually adding a person. That person was already in the office. This is a part-time. It's less money than what we were spending. It's less money than what we were spending before to keep the extra body for all the 91A requests, for all the extra minutes that are required, everything that was presented. So we're not actually increasing, we're moving some positions around in the office. That's the way it was presented at the Budget Committee, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Over here, Mr. Scan?
I just want to move the question.
All right, are we ready to vote on that amendment? Okay, the amendment is to reduce the bottom line, 1,525,123, by $10,000. All those in favor of doing that, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, the nays have it, so we'll start again. So that's executive. Any more discussion on executives? Election and registration, $32,865. Any questions there? Yes. Check.
Elaine Chick. I just have a question as to why the number on page six, 32,865, doesn't match the number on page eight, 30,335.
Does anybody want to take that? Is that because there are different numbers of elections each year?
Yes, it's breaking out supervisors. I don't break them up.
Thank you.
On the operating budget. DRA doesn't consider those different categories, but customarily in the financial report, people are accustomed to seeing that breakout.
Thank you.
Financial Administration, $51,935. No questions. Assessing, $6,125. We, somebody wants to know what that's for.
I may be incorrect about this, but there are certain things that we do in the office when property cards are researched, people change things on their property, they increase the size of lots, things like that. So there's certain information that we can provide to avatar ourselves, so they don't, we don't have to pay them to gather that information.
So the $6,000 pays somebody in the office while the other articles pay the avatar,
Primarily, it's updating our tax maps, having our inventory forms that you should all have by this point, and the mailing cost of those inventories.
Okay.
Tax map maintenance and inventory.
Okay. Legal, $45,000. payroll expenses, $57,500. Planning and zoning, $19,756. Municipal buildings, $67,000. Cemeteries, $2,500. Insurance fees, $105,500. Advertising and regional dues, $3,000. Police, $179,159. We have a question on police?
Pat Riker, could you please tell me what the increase in the budget from last year to now is?
Who wants to answer that question? The increase in the police line, is that what you're saying? It's the increase in the police line?
Did you mean how much or what for?
If I'm, whoops. If I'm looking at this right, it says January to December 16, $169,243.18. And I guess the next column is the current budget of $173,209. And, or I guess the new proposed budget is the $179,159. So it's an increase of $10,000, so I just wondered what that was going for.
I do know that a percentage of that is a salary increase. I don't think there's anything else that was in the.
Well, we may have, I, I think supplies moved up a little.
Right. Some of, there might have been some office supply lines and stuff like that in the individual item budget under the department that were moderately incidental, but the primary amount of money is an increase in salary. At this point, I'm not exactly aware of what percentage went to whom.
Can anybody provide further information there?
I didn't know if the chief was still here.
Chief Buds, do you want to speak?
Part of the increase went to upgrading my city.
Take the mic, police.
Chief Buds, part of the increase went to updating our information management corporation, our computer, our computers, to make it compatible with the system they're upgrading over at Carroll County Sheriff's Office. We should be able to have the capability where when we enter somebody's name, if they have any issues or any past histories in other municipalities like Conway, Wolfboro, it'll all be available to us instead of what we have in-house. I, looking at the figures, I did see there were some things under there, under expenditures that were details that were paid for officers that haven't been, that at the time of this printing hadn't been paid up yet. Is that accurate, Claudia? Looking at last year's expenditures, there were some things there that were, my understanding.
I was looking at the actual or the budget. But yes, Tim, I would say that software, the software contract did increase.
Software contract, and a lot of times, things like vests that get expired that need to be replaced, we did have a couple vests that needed to be replaced. They, they came out of uniforms rather than out of like durable equipment, because that, those particular items are officer-specific. I can't just take it away and say, okay, the next guy that comes in, next lady that comes in, we put that on them. We're very fortunate, and we enjoy, a lot of our part-time officers come pre-equipped because they work for other municipalities.
Okay, further questions under police? All right, Fire Rescue Department, $133,378. Emergency Forest 911, $6,010. Highways and Streets, $452,000. Street Lighting, $7,250. What streets, Henry?
When I was first elected Selectman, this is one of the things I looked at, and I did go around and I located every street lamp in town and tried to see if there are any that we could get rid of. Majority of them are, 153 has quite a few, that's a state road, they have a thing on intersections and stuff like that. Some of the other ones in town, the only really real reason that they're there is is that they had a T-intersection with a main road, and it's a school bus stop. If you drive around at night, you will bump into a light now and then. I will say, for where, knowing where you live, you can leave Route 25 and never see one, but.
All right. Solid Waste Collection, oh, sorry, Ms. Swan.
I see on, on the, in the actual warrant article, it says 452, 452,000 for highways and streets. Looking at the breakout, it says 492,000, if I'm reading that correctly.
On page what?
On page 11, halfway down.
All right, 492,000 versus 452.
Is it the streetlights?
No, I have total highway and streets on page 11.
That, on, page 11, including road, surface, and repair and road reconstruction at the beginning, that totals 40,000.
Thank you.
Okay, you clear on that? Thank you. We cleared that up. All right, where are we?
Solid Waste.
Solid Waste Collection, $56,989. Solid Waste Disposal, $90,000. Solid Waste Cleanup, $3,750. Dog Officer Expenses, $500. Health Agencies and Hospitals, $15,358. General Assistance, $14,000. Meals on Wheels, $4,500. Parks and Recreation, $5,000. Patriotic Purposes, $650. Conservation Commission, $3,796. Town Forester, $1,000. Dead Service, $1,000. Okay, that's our proposed budget. Any more questions, comments? You ready to vote on our, oh?
Ready.
Ms. Riker.
Thanks. Pat Riker, I have a question on our amount for Meals on Wheels. I'm a little concerned after seeing the current presidential budget that was submitted a day or two ago, where the Meals on Wheels program was cut national. And I'm just wondering, is this an adequate amount for the, the people, the disabled and the seniors in our town? Is this, is this a reasonable amount, given the fact that President Trump has chosen to cut this particular program?
If you want to answer that, Mr. Spencer?
My knowledge of the depth of national politics is a little limited, but I did actually hear a report on that on the radio, and one of the claims made on the radio was is that the federal government only gives about 3% of the overall cost of Meals on Wheels. I have not heard anything from Oscepe Concerned Citizen, but it's relatively new news that it got cut at the federal level. I don't necessarily think I'd be opposed if an amendment was made to raise that by a little bit.
Are you making amendment, Ms. Riker?
No, I just like to comment that.
No, you're not, Ms. Riker.
Oh, sorry.
No?
Yes, I do make amendment. I'd like to hear.
Okay, you're not ready yet. Okay, Mr. Pica, go.
Yeah, this Meals on Wheels, it contributes to climate change.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, over, Ms. Riker.
I'm a Meals on Wheels driver, and we have very few people in Effingham who need, who subscribe to the meals, so you can see that we're under budget anyway.
Dave Strauss, they presented a detailed sheet explaining exactly what they're using the amounts for, and this was the requested amount.
Okay.
Further questions, comments?
Are we ready to vote on the budget? I know we have somebody from the Freedom Food Pantry here. I hadn't heard any questions for her, but if you want to say anything. Do we have any questions about the food pantry?
I would like to make, my name is Doris Saroy from the Freedom Food Pantry, and I wanted to make the residents of Effingham aware that the pantry feeds those in need in three towns, Oscepe, Effingham, and Freedom. Our year-end figures ended 2016 with 54% of our clients are from Oscepe who contribute $8,000. 33% of our clients are from Effingham, who it's proposed that, for $5,000, and 13% are from Freedom, who also are contributing $5,000. Our operating budget finished in at just under $20,000. Some of the things that are affecting the pantry, which is difficult for my forecast, is that the job market in this area hasn't recovered from when Lakeview closed and put more than 400 people out of work. The drought in the Midwest and in California was in its fifth year, which affects grain and food prices. The SNAP program, which is food stamps, was cut in 2014 when the 10-year Farm Aid Bill was passed. Social Security and disability cost of living increases this year was 3/10 of a percent, which is the smallest increase since the mid-1970s. Medicare was increased. More than half of our clients are seniors or disabled. And then I just heard on the news this week that the House has passed what's known as work requirements in order to qualify for food stamps known as SNAP. In work requirements in urban areas won't be a problem, but pantries serving rural areas are going to have a, are going to have an increase because of the lack of jobs in this area, the lack of transportation in this area. In order for them to get to a job, they need a car. In order to have a car, they need money in order to get to a job, and the cost of daycare. So I just wanted to make everybody in this town aware of how the pantry is attempting to.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Morris, you can mic up, please.
Thank you. I'm curious to know, I'm talking about the legal line item of $45,000. In the past, we've maintained the same legal representation in our town from the same attorney. With the procurement policy now in effect, will we have to put this policy out to bid? Will we have to rehire our attorney by the bidding process?
Oh, it strikes me as that at the end of any contracted period, that yes, you would, you would have to at least put out a request for proposals from other firms. And I would imagine that it wouldn't be so much a bid with a legal firm, because that's more of the bailiwick of a request for proposal, but it does make sense after five years of seeing what the market bears.
Any further questions? You ready to vote on the budget article?
Ready.
You're ready. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,525,123, the ensuing year for general operation. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 22, say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. Article 22 passed. Article 23, see if the town of Effingham will vote to remove the Selectmen as agents to expend from the town-owned Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established in accordance with RSA 31, 35,1, and direct that future expenditures from this fund will be made by the legislative body. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. This article petitioned by Mike Hamley and others. Do I, do you want to make a motion to?
I do, I'm motion.
All right, Mike moves, and Tim Eldredge seconds. Do we want to have discussion? I'll recognize the mic. The mic to Mike, please.
Yeah, initially, when this was circulating, there wasn't a decision by the board, or there was a decision to go with Granite Road Bridge versus Snow Road at that time, and that evolved through the Budget Committee hearing meetings. But this was to give control of bridges and to have the Selectmen present a plan for those bridges to this body. So that was an attempt here to return control of the finances to the legislative body so that we could decide what bridges we'd want to fund and so forth. The way this reads right now, it just allows the Selectmen to spend whatever monies are in here at their discretion for any bridge that they'd like to undertake. So that was the point of this warrant article.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Further discussion on Article 23? Ms. Payne.
Karen Payne, I'm wondering if, when the snow bro, snow bridge work is going Karen Payne, I'm wondering if, when the Snow Bro, Snow Bridge work is going to be done, and if it goes over $160,000, does this mean that we wait until next year's town meeting to do that? And I don't remember what the timeframe was on the Snow Bridge.
Who wants to answer that?
If this passed, and there was an overage on the estimated cost of doing Snow Road Bridge, that if this passed, the selectmen this year would not be able to pull money out of that account. They would have to run it by the legislative body.
Coming around to Mr. Argenti, you're over here.
Jory Argenti, this has been on the books the way it is for a long time. Regardless of who the selectmen are in office, we as a town have elected them, given them the authority to expend money, whether it is to maintain buildings. So I think this is just another tool for them to use. Our bridges have deteriorated, nothing has been done. They have a chance to get it done. Like Karen said, if they do not have enough funds in there, if they run into something that puts that off, we've put it off way too long. We have to trust our selectmen. We have voted them in, so I say that we leave it the way it is.
Thank you. Over here to Mr. Pike.
Yeah, I'm Bill Pike. Just to bring the history up to date on this, I created this, well, I didn't, like the board, it's like when I was on, created this, this Capital Reserve Fund when I was on the board. Because prior to that, we only had a Capital Reserve Fund for Hunter's Bridge Road. We had nothing for any other bridges. Then in, I don't know, 2008, 2009, well, let me go back. We created this, and the selectmen were not agents to expend. Then in like 2008, 2009, we knew there were issues with the Snow Road Bridge. So we petitioned, well, we asked town meeting to appoint the agent, the selectmen as agents to expend, so that we could hire an engineer to assess Snow Road Bridge, not Snow Road, Stevens Road Bridge. And we spent, I don't know, $2,000 to $3,000 for an engineer to make recommendations to us. That was in 2008 or '09. Then after that, I was able to get preliminary bridge estimates on Granite Road and Stevens Road, which I did. After I left in 2010, the whole bridge thing just fell apart, and nothing happened until the last couple of years. But originally, originally, the selectmen were not agents to expend. And at the time, we felt that the townspeople should be the ones that decide where the bridge money goes, not just arbitrarily whatever selectman decides which bridge they want to put money into. Because some of the money's been spent out of this account on Granite Road, and I think even on Stevens Road, I mean, on Snow Road, calling it maintenance, but these were made for replacing bridges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Further questions, comments on Article 23? Jim Skeen.
Jim Skeen, again, like Jory said, you elect a selectman, you put him in operating office, he has to have the power to do the best that he can for the people in Effingham. That's why he's there. If you don't trust him, then get him out of that office, the next year he goes up for it, and get somebody that you do trust. But the idea of tying their hands and saying they can't expend the money that's been allocated is absurd. So I please pray that you vote this down.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 23? Are you ready for the question? To see if the town of Effingham will vote to remove the selectmen as agents to expend from the town-owned Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established in accordance with RSA 35,1, and direct that future expenditures from this fund will be made by the legislative body. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. This article is petitioned by Mike Cahaly and others. All those in favor of Article 23 as written, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. Article 23 fails. Article 24, to see if the town of Effingham will vote to establish a Capital Reserve Fund in accordance with RSA 35,1, for the purpose of constructing and/or reconstructing the Snow Road Bridge, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 towards this purpose. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The article is petitioned by Mike Cahaly and others. The selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Mike, do you so move?
I so move.
Then moved by Mike Cahaly, second. Seconded by Tim Eldredge. I'll recognize Mike.
Again, this was at the point where the Budget Committee hearings were taking place, and there wasn't a plan presented at that time. And this was, again, just to establish that Snow Road Bridge would be the focal point, and to put a Capital Reserve Fund in place for us to see a plan and to work off that plan as a legislative body to vote if we wanted to have it. Obviously, this is a moot point now with the passage of Article 16, so I would suggest we move on.
Are you suggesting we amend this article to indefinitely postpone?
I am.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to indefinitely postpone Article 24. Is there a second? Mr. Bartowitz, second. Is there any discussion on that article? All right, the amendment is to indefinitely postpone Article 24. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The article is indefinitely postponed, Article 24. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to change the advertising requirements for special projects passed by the town at the 1995 town meeting, Article 24, and amended at the 2014 town meeting, Article 21, to read as follows. "To require advertising for special projects costing $15,000 or more in at least two internet publications, as well as one statewide and one local newspaper for requests for proposals, bids, requiring no less than 30 days from the original advertised date in all publications, prior to closing the competitive RFP bidding process. This is considered a binding requirement for vote of the legislative body and is to be included in any purchasing ordinance and/or purchasing policy adopted by the town of Effingham." This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The article is petitioned by Mike Cahaly and others. Is there a motion?
Yeah, again, I think we'd --
Are you going to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to indefinitely --
Move.
-- the procurement policy.
Okay, so the motion has been made to indefinitely postpone Article 25. Is there a second? Mr. Jones, second. Is there any discussion on indefinitely postponing Article 25? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 25, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 25 is indefinitely postponed. Article, yes, Mr. Morris. The motion is being made by Mr. Bartowitz to restrict reconsideration on Articles, what? Articles 19 through 25.
Sir.
And there's a second for Mr. Potter. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of restricting Articles 19 through 25, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and those articles are restricted. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of its agents and auditors. Mr. Spencer moves, second.
Second.
Mr. Espy, Article 26. Any discussion on Article 26?
Just a question, Eric Jones, just a question on when we anticipate getting a final determination from the auditors. We haven't? Okay. And that's available in the town offices? Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions on reports and audits? Seeing none, are you ready to vote on Article 26? To see if the town will vote to accept the reports of its agents and auditors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article 26 carries. Article 27, to transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. Any moves, second? Mr. Edward, second.
I would just like to point out, we have the closing of an era here. For 21 years, Mr. Mike Polkowski has served on the Budget Committee, and when the gavel goes down at the completion of this meeting, he is passing on to the world of retirement from the Budget Committee. And I would like to give a round of applause to Mike for all the years he's served for the Effingham Pantry.
Thank you, Mike. Any, Mr. Murphy, run over there.
Yeah, I'd like to take this time to thank Mr. Lawrence Edwards for having served us over these last years, and for saving this town a lot of money.
Any other comments or questions? I'll recognize Mr., I'll recognize Ms. Payne, and then Mr. Jones.
The Preservation Society would like to thank the Select Board for recognizing the Vicentennial, the building on the cover. It's open from 9 to 1 every Saturday during the summer, but thank you for this one.
You are welcome.
Just an announcement, the Historic District Commission is actually undertaking a project right now. We are working to get a historic roadside marker from the state of New Hampshire for the historic Effingham Town Hall Building, which houses, of course, the library and the Charter Oak Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons. Part of that process includes a petition from citizens of New Hampshire. We have a clipboard over on the table where we're taking signatures from citizens of the state towards that process, and hope we can get your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, all the way over there?
Johanna Viano, we have a lot of roads in this town that we don't have a lot of control over, and they're really bumpy. Route 153, I drive all the time. And I just want to say, Town House Road is a pleasure to drive on at this time of year. Thank you for a job well done.
Anybody else? Mr. Morris.
I'd like to thank everyone that worked on the Master Plan Committee over these past six or seven years. We now have an official signed copy of a master plan to guide the work of our town in the coming years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, planning board. Anybody else?
Since the opening of the discussion, and so much discussion to begin with, I'd like to thank that young man that ran his little head off.
I'd like to thank all our microphone carriers, all the students set up in the elementary school. Thank you. Anybody else?
Take the front.
Mr. Potter. Oh, sorry. All right, well, there and then there.
And thank you all. You did more than great. You came out and floated, and everybody acted like a lady, a gentleman. It's a pleasure to be part of the citizenry of Effingham. I like to say it's just great living in Effingham. And one of the things that made it great was during the storm, or after the storm was over on Tuesday, when I got out there on Wednesday to begin shoveling snow. I was too long shoveling before a truck came along with a plow and started to plow some of the snow away from the front of my car. I don't know yet who it was. But that's just one thing. When we got back in the house, and before long, someone's in the back of my car with a shovel, shoveling snow. I didn't ask for either one, but that's the way Effingham is. They are nice folks.
All right, I had a good time this morning. I hope you did too. Yes, Mr. Spencer? All right, one more thing.
I'm just doing this so that one more day of skiing is screwed up for Mike. I want to thank everybody for the attention they paid this year. I particularly, I want to say something very nice to Lawrence. I embarrassed him at the election by giving him a hug, so I'm not going to do it at this meeting. Is that okay with you, Lawrence? All right, I want everybody to know, I learned a tremendous amount from Lawrence about just dealing with contractors and how to go about it, and I hope to put it to good use in the next year that I'm standing here. So I just, Lawrence, you stood up, you ran for election, you served. I never once doubted your intentions. Thank you for what you taught me, and God bless you. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Anybody else have any other comments? Yes, run back, yes. Run, run.
I'm Elaine Colley, and I have one question about a reverse 911 for people who have internet connection issues. And I apologize, I get nervous when I speak in front of people.
Doing fine.
The voting and annual meetings, selectmen meetings, and Budget Committee meetings, if we could get, you know, a phone call instead of spending money for mailings, if we could save some money, I'm sorry.
Chief Butts can talk about reverse 911?
We can't use reverse 911 to make announcements as far as municipal meetings and things like that. That, they're very strict as far as, the state is the administrators of that, and they're very strict as far as the criteria we can use. Missing persons, that type of a thing, we can do, but we can't do like regular annual announcements or weekly announcements, something like that.
I will say that when moderators all over the state were worried about Tuesday's snowstorm, there was a lot of discussion about towns notifying people if the election was going to be postponed. On the conference call we were all on, on Monday through emergency management, Governor Sununu told us to use 911, reverse 911. There was also some discussion among the towns that did postpone. They have very active town newsletters, email blasts out of the town office. There might be a group that might want to get together and think about, is that something Effingham can do? Could volunteers work on doing that? I don't know, but I'll tell you, as a moderator, I just believe there was no way we were going to get in touch with enough people to let them know that our election was being postponed. So if we can come up with better ways to communicate, maybe we could avoid some of those problems in the future. So I leave that out there as an idea. Yes, ma'am?
Ellen White, here on behalf of, obviously, Effingham, being a citizen here, and I want to thank you all for coming out to attend town meeting, and also for your support for the Effingham Elementary School PTO, who has provided all your snacks and lunch materials out there. We have plenty more out there, so please grab some before you leave for the day, and thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Bartowitz?
I'd like to thank Susan Slack for stepping in and being our moderator this year, and for next year as well. I bowed out last year due to fear. I'll tell you, it's not an easy job to stand here and try to address everybody's concerns and everybody's comments and the little twists and turns that you guys throw at us. So Susan, thank you very much for doing your job.
Yes, thank you. I hear a motion. Mr. Bartowitz.
I just want to point out, we had a town meeting today. Everybody got along, and we were able to pass some widely needed articles. However, we do have, every year, town meeting, we come in and start to nickel and dime here and there. I just want to point out, our budget process starts in October. We have public hearings --
We have public hearings. This last year, it was every Tuesday night after the selectmen's meeting, and for the most part, nobody comes. And we have a public hearing at the end of our budget hearing process, and a handful of people come. And then everybody comes in here and starts questioning and everything. I just want to recommend, there was a lot of recommendations that we get involved in the selectmen's process, but I just want to recommend we get involved in the budget process and come and hear the reasoning why Mr. Morris, sitting up there, chairing the committee, and we come up to a decision as to the way we come up with the decisions we come. And we listen to people. So I would invite you to come to the meetings and let your voices be heard then, too.
Thank you. Mr. Bartowitz, do I hear any motion? Tim Eldridge moves for adjourned, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, wait, one more thing. Alexis.
I want to take my grandpa's shirt.
Aww. Yay. Good job.